Monday, July 15th, 2019. It is now 6:01 PM. I'll be acting chair this evening. Sheila Dibb and Jeffrey Stillings will be with us remotely due to being out of town. If we could all stand for a pledge allegiance? All right, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. While the board meeting is usually broadcast live, it is also recorded for transmission on the Rutland Public Access Television and YouTube. If we could start with the Treasury warrant payroll?
I'll make a motion to approve Treasury warrant number 28 for fiscal year 2019 and Treasury warrant number two for fiscal year 20 and payroll.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we have a set of minutes from Monday, July 1st.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the Monday, July 1st, 2019 meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'm Shane, I was absent. And we'll start with Cotonan Clark Farm.
Do you want to take that one? All right. Want to give a little backstory? Is that what we?
Yeah.
So, we have a proclamation to read on behalf of Cotonan Clark Farm in recognition of their 100th anniversary. They're going to be holding an event on the 20th of this month. It's open to the public. So, I don't know, Mike, did you as the TA want to read the proclamation?
Sure. So, the board actually has to vote to sign it.
Okay.
But it is a proclamation declaring Saturday, July 20th, 2019, Cotonan Clark Farm Day in recognition of the service of Skip and Kathy Clark and their family to the residents of the town of Rutland. Whereas the Cotonan family immigrated to the United States from the Republic of Finland in 1919. And whereas Mr. Waino Cotonan opened Cotonan Farm upon settling on the property on Glenwood Road in Rutland. And whereas Mr. Skip, if I say these names wrong, I'm so sorry. Tano Cotonan expanded the operations of the farm to house more than 10,000 chickens to create a large-scale chicken and egg operation. And whereas in 1994, Leroy Skip Clark and Kathy Clark took over Cotonan Clark Farm and began raising pigs and cattle meat as well as undertaking the business of selling grain and other supplies for keeping animals. And whereas Cotonan Clark Farm has been famous for its award-winning pigs at the Freiburg Fair in Maine. And whereas Cotonan Clark Farm continues to operate under the guidance of Skip Clark and his daughter Tammy Moore with the operations for pigs, beef, cattle, chickens, eggs, and other farm supplies. Now therefore be it resolved that the members of the Board of Selectmen declare Saturday, July 20th, 2019 as Cotonan Clark Farm Day in the town of Rutland, Massachusetts in recognition of the service that the Cotonan and Clark families have provided to the residents of the town and the region for the past 100 years.
All right. So, we need a motion to? To sign this proclamation?
Motion to sign the proclamation is read?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great job, Mike. And Mike, would you mind signing for me?
Sure.
My name. Thank you.
Skip did you?
Thank you very much, Skip. Well, I want to thank the board and everybody in the town of Rutland for the support that they've given us over the past 50, 60 years. And I sure hope everybody will come on the 20th because it's going to be the closest thing to you to eat from farm to table next Saturday because it's going to be pulled pork and beef, hamburgers, hot dogs for the kids, and whatever. I really hope everybody does come. Even you do. Thanks, Skip.
We'll be there.
Jeff.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you again, Skip.
Thank you, Skip.
All right. Fire Brigade, one-day liquor license.
The Fire Brigade is looking to hold a beer garden for the food truck festival. So, you have the application in front of you, looking to approve, pending binder liability insurance to be turned in, and a receipt of $60 for the fee.
I'll make a motion to approve the one-day liquor license for the Rutland Fire Brigade. Can I add that we consider waiving the $60 fee as we have done in the past for nonprofits in town? We do it, we've done it in the past for when St. Pat's does their thing, and I think for Cooney, the K-9 Cooney stuff.
Mm-hmm. Okay. You can add that to the motion, yeah?
Okay. So, I'll make a motion that we approve the Rutland Fire Brigade one-day liquor license on the event date, July 27th, 2019, pending all the papers and everything is in, and that we waive the $60 fee.
Second that. Second that motion.
Do we have any question or comments from anybody?
Great job.
No. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Unanimous. Thank you. And time for public comment. We have Mr. Moore.
Yes, hi. My name's Sean Moore, and I'm here representing Massum Growers LLC. I asked to be put on the agenda but was placed on public comment instead. I'm just going to read a statement here, and then I can provide a copy of the statement later to the board if they so choose to have it. "To the people of Rutland, Massachusetts and the Select Board, my name is Sean Moore. I have lived in Rutland since 2008. Now, when I became a stay-at-home dad and not work outside the home, I vowed that I would give back and do as much for my community as I could. I love living here and being involved in Rutland's community, and those who know me hopefully would agree with that. I volunteer for our schools, the Boy and Girl Scouts, and am on several town boards. I have been on the Conservation Commission for almost 10 years, the Open Space and Recreational Committee, the Growth Management Subcommittee, as well as the Planning Board and Zoning Bylaw Committee. In speaking with the representative from the Cannabis Control Commission, I was told that who they wanted in the cannabis business were people from the community and people who are involved in the community. Feeling I represented that type of business owner that they were recommending, I went through the proper channels and filed the proper paperwork to pursue opening up a cannabis-related business in town. I believe someone who is a local who lives in town would try to keep the best interests of the town, and we all would agree that the revenue would really benefit the public. I believe this business could be very beneficial to the people of Rutland with the taxes and community impact payments and programs that it will help the town's diversities. I also know the negatives of this project that it's associated with. I have a bachelor's in science and psychology concentrating in child development, mental health, as well as an advanced certification in addiction and substance abuse, and I feel that I could help educate my community on these subjects. I ask the Select Board and the public this day, Monday, July 15th, 2019, to accept my host agreement and to keep this business locally owned. The town voted for businesses to come in. A bylaw was written and accepted by the AG, making the town ready to have businesses come in. I was also informed by the town's administrator that my host agreement was reviewed by both the town council, legal council, as well as the Cannabis Control Commission. Both have agreed that it is acceptable. I started this process approximately a year ago, and I am at the point where I feel the town should make a decision. If you are in favor of keeping this business owned by someone who lives in town and supports the town, please accept this host agreement so I can complete the licensure process that I have been working so hard on. It has been a long process, and the town has been well-informed in my intentions for over a year. Again, I ask you to show your support for me. Thank you."
You say you have a copy you want to submit to the board?
I can provide it later. I don't have a copy right now. But this is the copy of my host agreement I will submit as public. The, that's pretty much it. I mean, I have, I do have documentation from the Cannabis Control Commission for the guidance of municipalities showing that the town's ready to have businesses come in. And I also have from the Cannabis Control Commission guidance letters for the host community agreements that proves that my host agreement is well-acceptable. And it is a good deal, a good fair deal. And these are all addressed. These are also available online in the search terms on here, but I'll put that there.
All right. Thank you, Sean.
Do you mind?
Nope.
So, Sean, thanks for coming to clarify all that. One thing I can say is that the reason why it was my suggestion that it not be on the agenda yet is because after speaking with representatives from the CCC, the Cannabis Control Commission, for people listening who may not know, is because they are suggesting that we look at the steps that the town hasn't taken since the bylaw was passed, and that's an official setting of the board of what criteria that any proposal for an HCA will see.
Yeah. Well, I contest that the criteria has already been met because the bylaw was written, and the guidelines, everything that's in place is in the guidelines from municipalities. So, I'm not really sure what extra you would be looking for.
It's what, it's the proposal that we choose in the end, what we're going to be judging that proposal on at the end. While we have the bylaw that determines what any proposal that's accepted would have to do, we have to find, set the criteria for what we judge the proposals that are submitted by.
Can we, we did not issue an RFP for the solicitation. Is that something we could do?
Most, I don't think any municipalities have issued an RFP for it yet.
All right.
So, I guess in that sense that I am making a proposal, and I'm asking you to consider it, and?
So, if I may, I think what Mike's saying is we as a board need to either appoint a group in town, or we as a board need to set our kind of screening criteria.
Yeah. So, the way that that works through the legislation is it comes through my office. I just need the board to set these, there's the minimum criteria, but then the town is allowed to say if they want, not saying that we are going to, but if we were, you know, look at this as well, or something like that. That just needs to be formalized.
It doesn't say anything anywhere in the bylaw or the Cannabis Control Commission's guidelines of this.
No, I'm talking about the MGL statute, per what I was told by the Cannabis Control.
You hold that?
Not off the top of my head, no.
I think the concern in that, and even appointing a group or us taking a look at it, is now that the board has both copies of both proposed host agreements, it's kind of hard to back into criteria, knowing what's already included in both agreements.
I agree.
So, I'm curious as to what, what would be recommended for us and how to move forward with putting those into place in a fair and equitable manner?
Yeah. So, that is why it hadn't been planned to come up until August 12th. We have the, our cannabis attorney from KP Law coming out to address the board meeting as well as a member of the CCC to explain that process moving forward.
Okay.
At that meeting, and they've been made aware of the process that's happened so far too, so they're preparing to address that.
Okay.
Well, I leave it in your hands. I think the town is ready on all of it to accept agreements to come in. I have gone through all the proper channels. It's been over a year. It's been several years since this has been made available to the town for the state to move on this. State has waited too long, and I feel I couldn't meet the guidelines, so I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Now, the KP Law and the Cannabis Control Commission, August 12th, that's going to be a regular scheduled board meeting.
Correct.
All right. Anybody else for public comment?
I think to the public. Joe is not here tonight, but I would like to, to the TA to maybe the next meeting. I had asked, or I talked about the tip for down here. I'm trying to get together a public meeting of where they are, and what's the story between the dam versus a culvert, whatever. And I would like to see some, something, you know, brought before the whole town so that we can, because I think we're, I don't want to get snowballed. Let's just put it that way.
Yeah. Joe is planning on working, I'm sorry. Yeah, Joe is planning on working on that. He's waiting to get through tomorrow's public hearing, but he has started the preliminary steps to set up a public meeting to clarify all of that information.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Sean McLaughlin, 175 Berry Paxton Road. I'm just here wondering about your proposal. Where is, you know, the business going to be? Do you have business plans? Do you have a proposal of growth, the retail part of it?
Yes, I do have a business plan. I have submitted an appointment with the Cannabis Control Commission. I feel that I'm ready to go.
Have you, yeah, have you forwarded anything to the?
Well, the town has been fully aware.
The town of the location and the plans?
It's all involved in the Cannabis Control Commission licensure process.
Let's go into a little bit in-depth into his application, so. Let's just give a public comment, not for a question.
Shouldn't the public be aware of?
Publicity aware.
Oh, I have no idea where, where the location.
All you need to do is go online, Mr. McLaughlin. It's all public, public knowledge. It's all open to the public. You can go.
Select what can't comment, or where the location, or you can't comment on where the proposal would be instead of us looking?
It's not on the agenda, plus we have numerous applications. The other applicant's not here. And again, it's not on the agenda.
It has to be in a zoned area. If you would like to know where those zoned areas are, they're, it's.
Well, your proposal in particular, where were you proposing to have that business?
Well, it's going to be, a move report to be on the outskirts of town, but right now that's not finalized, so I'm able to say.
All right. You all set, Sean? This isn't on the agenda for discussion today, it's just.
All right.
I think there will be, you know, when we have to clarify, there's going to be obviously a robust discussion with, for the public about these proposals and this issue, where I think, I would imagine that everyone would get into the weeds of the details.
When we have all applicants present.
And there's various zoning, so.
Public attendant.
Yeah.
Get some of the details.
Yeah. Poor choice of words.
It'll be well-publicized, Sean, so you'll know when to come.
Thank you.
Hey, bud. It's going to be a 176 Berry Paxton Road.
Light it up, Jeff, that's all right. Like they say, don't get high on your own supply.
All right, anybody else here for public comment?
That was a pot shot.
Nobody here for department updates, so we'll go right to the town administrator's update.
Thank you very much. Just an update on a couple of the grant applications that we talked about the last time. We have a representative of the park grant screening committee coming out to tour the site with Director Buckley and I this Thursday. And again, that was for the installation of a new parking lot at our surrounding Marsh Field to add 100 parking spaces there to get, to move the parking spaces that are on Palm Agusset off so that we don't have that safety hazard anymore, but also get ready for when the tip comes through and takes those out and put a sidewalk there anyway. So, they're coming out to take a site visit as that. That's part of the normal screening process there to make sure that we didn't over-exaggerate anything on the application. We also are, I had a call today from Chris Clutchman, Director of Housing Choice, just following up on our grant application there. They're looking for just a little bit more information as part of their screening process, but that means they've at least reviewed the preliminary round of it there. Just to clarify for everyone who's here and for everyone who's watching, there's a small rumor going around town that there was a public hearing last week held on 40B housing. That was not the case. The parcel that the planning board was looking at last week was parcel 40B on the assessor's map, and a couple people were confused that there was a public hearing about 40B housing in town. So, because I've received so many calls about that, I just want to throw that out there as a clarification. Our town planner, Dave George, is meeting with CMRPC to begin preliminary discussions on a couple projects that he wants to begin working on, a couple chapters of our master plan, including a housing production plan, which is where different groups within the town, the board, my office, the planning board, and so on, can look at the, any issues or questions surrounding 40B houses in general. Like my segue I did there, that can be used later on. It's actually a chapter of the master plan anyway, so it actually takes care of that and also opens us up to further grant funding through the community compact. Director Buckley, myself, and an attorney from KP Law are currently working on setting a finalized date to meet with Director Scanell regarding our CRIMA for when we sit at the table for renegotiations next week. Since I told you I would let you know when we set that and who we'd be with, just giving you that update there. However, since we're going into the negotiation at this point, I can't talk about in an open session exactly what we're going into, other than it's all the input that we've received from the public there. And then the last thing I say is just a reminder that when I was originally hired as the town administrator, I gave all the dates of pre-planned, things of that nature. July 29th is the last one of those. So, now that the set schedule is clear as to Monday, board meeting nights and so on from there, that should be all cleared up after that. And we, I've done a check with the department heads for the beginning of the fiscal year since that's when all of our benefit time re-updates, and there doesn't seem to be any major issues with the department heads in any meetings if we need them to come in as well. So, that is the end of my end, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Okay. Through the chair.
Go ahead.
About the park grant, you said they had reviewed, you had contacted with somebody who'd taken a look at it. What is the additional information they're requesting? You said they're requesting additional information?
The housing choice?
The housing choice.
The housing choice. They're just looking for a little more detail. We worked with CMRPC on our grant application, and it's more detail on, we provided a budget as part of the process, but what exactly is in that for equipment? Is it playground equipment? What, how much is going toward playground equipment? How much is going toward buying benches? How much is going toward masonry? And so on from there to build these pocket parks that we talked about around town.
So, was there any initial feedback as to our application, or?
They're just looking for more detail than was submitted. Where the, this is one of the first years of the housing choice grant. They were looking for something a little more specific than general as to what was submitted.
Who submitted the portion that we're referencing?
That part was done by CMRPC.
CMRPC. So, are they drafting the additional material that's going back?
We'll be working on a lot of it. We'll be getting their help once it's written, just as a second set of eyes to look at. It's, it'll be done. We'll get that done by Friday, and that's a week before Director Clutchman's deadline for us.
How competitive is that proposal process?
It can be, again, this is the first year that it's been open, excuse me, the second year it's been open. But it tends to be competitive. There's a large applicant pool. Not all of the 351 are housing choice communities in Massachusetts, but it's gotten to the point where they've actually had to add bonus points onto the application, so there are 10 different areas where we can get bonus points. We do meet some of those as well, and some bonus points are worth more than others, but because it's so competitive, they had to add an extra evaluative measure.
Okay. I just, because I'm very familiar with the process, we're lucky that we got the opportunity to resubmit something, because usually that would just disqualify the application. So, if you're telling me that CMRPC is either incapable or unqualified to be writing portions of our grants, I would want somebody reviewing that before it gets submitted to the state so that this doesn't happen.
Absolutely, yeah. And it's, I would just say there was a tight timeline that was associated with when we weren't sure if we were even going to be eligible for a housing choice or not, and then when the grant was to be submitted after that. So, there was a tight timeline there, but I have spoken with CMRPC, and we'll be reviewing everything twice.
Okay.
For everything.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
All right, let's skip off to old business. First would be the appointment list update.
So, you have in your packets a memo from Laura with a cover sheet as to the appointments that still need to be submitted. One thing that I will say that was different from the last meeting, we weren't sure why, there seemed to be no openings on the Agricultural Commission. Angela Swayze was filling the unexpired term of someone who had left, and that was the seat that was up July 1st. So, it just needs to be a confirmation that she continues now that the initial term that she was filling was up. So, that's all that was there. That was the reason it looked as though, we thought there was no open seats this year is because we filled it without realizing that it was only fillable up until June 1st. And again, all of these people who are currently serving in these positions serve until either replaced or reappointed, so even if their appointment's up July 1st, not June 1st, excuse me about that, they continue to serve and have just as much voting rights, just as much count towards the quorum and can have discussion until either replaced or reappointed.
So, does anybody want to address? We have four applicants for the Conservation Commission for two seats.
Billings to the chair.
Go right ahead.
Can you name the four applicants for the CONCON?
Sean Moore would be a re-applicant, recommended by the chair of the commission. Peter Crane, a re-applicant, again, recommended by the chair of the Conservation Commission. Jared Gentelucci, a new applicant with no recommendation, and Kevin Jarvey, again, a new applicant with no recommendation.
Thank you.
Stillings for the chair, can I motion that we confirm Angela Swayze to fill that final vacancy on the Agricultural Commission, the voting seat that vacates July 1st, but initiates again July 1st of this year?
You accept a second on that?
I mean, do we need a, for a reappointment, do we need a recommendation from the chair? That's part of our policies, so I mean, if we can, if we can do that.
So, she will get the appointment, I guess, because she was filling a tail end of that term?
Glenn Coppolo, 126 Main Street. He's chairman of the Agricultural Commission. The Agricultural Board has recommended Angela Swayze for appointment beginning July 1st.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn.
So, I would second Jeff's motion to reappoint Ms. Swayze to the Agricultural Commission in her seat.
Any further discussion on it? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
And we have.
Billings to the chair.
All right, go ahead.
I'd entertain looking at Jared Gentelucci and Kevin Jarvey as new members of the Conservation
Can we, through the chair, can we have a discussion?
Absolutely. That wasn't a motion, was it?
Uh, no, just tossing it out.
All right.
I'll take that motion if you want.
Yeah. I just think, you know, we have, as part of our select board policy that was shaped by the board, we, we have in our policies that in order for reappointments or new appointments to be looked at, we require a letter of recommendation from the chair. We have two applicants that have received letters of recommendation, and we have the chair here. I'm wondering if the chair will be willing to weigh in on why those recommendations were Through the chair, if that's.
That's fine.
Hi, Joe Dollarpull, chairman of Conservation Commission, 16 Molt Mill Road. We have four, I guess, applicants or re-applicants, as the case may be. I was notified by Laura Paradise on Monday, 7/28, through email, and I'll read that to you just in case anybody's missing it. At last Monday's board of selectmen meeting, the board discussed the two contested expiring seats on the Conservation Commission. As you know, Sean Moore and Peter Crane were the existing appointments, and Jared Gentelucci and Kevin Jarvey had submitted the. and Kevin Jarvey had submitted their interest in being appointed to the commission. The board respectfully requests your recommendations as chair on which two of the four applicants would best serve the Conservation Commission. The ConCom appointments are expected to be readdressed at next Board of Selectment meeting on Monday, July 15th. Okay, I submitted prior to receiving this, letters of recommendations for two current members. I was unable, even after this request, I was unable to produce any letters of recommendation and didn't see a reason to withdraw any letters of recommendation, as neither of these gentlemen have ever attended a Conservation Commission meeting. I know neither of them, so I would not venture to write any letter of recommendation for someone I do not know. And one of these gentlemen is not even qualified to be on a board.
Why is that?
You have to be a registered voter. Mr. Gentelucci is not a registered voter. I did do some checking, and that was just on a cursory basis after I received this letter. It's like, you know, you've got an applicant that is ineligible. The other applicant I cannot recommend, I do not know the gentleman.
Has either, either party contacted the board or the commission?
Well, it would appear that, no, the Conservation, they did not contact the Conservation Commission. The Board of Selectment apparently were contacted, and I would have hoped that the Board of Selectment would have at least vetted the individuals to see if they were even eligible to serve, but apparently that didn't happen. So I would stand, I would stand with my two recommendations.
Mr. Gentelucci provided a resume package which outlined his qualifications and educational background.
Would have been nice to have it. I was never given that.
Well, I think, too, Jeff, through the chair, if the individual's not qualified because they're not an eligible voter, regardless of whether he's an astronaut, it wouldn't make a difference. If he is unable to serve based on, I would assume that's in the, is that in the bylaws? Can we confirm?
It's in state law.
It's in state law.
But that could be, that could be remedied at 9:01 a.m. tomorrow morning, when he goes into register.
But again, I would suggest that, you asked me for my recommendation for the two best applicants to serve the ConCom, and I would say that I've got one applicant, one reappointment with 10 years' experience and has expressed an interest by coming to meetings and expressed that interest long before he was ever appointed. The same thing with the second reapplicant, was he came to meetings long before he was appointed.
I think.
And expressed an interest and a desire to serve. I knew neither of these gentlemen prior to them showing up at a ConCom meeting.
And I think through the chair, we've been kicking around this appointment for a while now. You know, our, our own policies that we've set as a board require written recommendations from the chair for appointments and reappointments. We have two applicants that are reapplying for positions that have letters of recommendation. We have one applicant that's not qualified to serve on a board, and the two applicants without recommendations from the chair have never attended a ConCom meeting. I, I think that the optics here, that we're playing politics with board recommendations, and I would just go ahead and make a motion to reappoint Sean Moore and Peter Crane to the ConCom, and just as a side note, add that it's embarrassing that it's taken us this long to kind of make this appointment.
Fillings to the chair.
Do I have a second before we have discussion? All right, I'm open to discussion.
I wanted to have a discussion.
Fillings to the chair.
Go ahead.
Make a motion that we appoint Jared Gentelucci and Kevin Jarvey for the two positions of Conservation Commission.
All right, we're, we're open for discussion right now. Do we have an individual?
Peter Crane needs way. It would be an improper act and a violation of bylaw to appoint someone who is not a registered voter.
I'd make a amended motion subsequent to registering the vote.
Can't do it. This is the appointment date. He must be a registered voter on the date of appointment. That is not negotiable by the bylaw.
Jeff, can I ask, through the chair, why you want these two individuals to serve on the board versus the other two that were recommended?
I like, I looked at the resume of Jared Gentelucci, and if you looked at it, it's, he's qualified.
But he's not qualified if he's not a registered voter.
Kevin Jarvey, I believe, has the best interests of the town, and one of the individuals up for reappointment, I'd rather not go into it, but I believe he was compromised, and I think, I think change is warranted. So my motion stands, Jared Gentelucci and Kevin Jarvey. Jared tentative on him registering the vote.
So I guess, just to be, just to be clear, though, Jeff, your motion will violate state law, state law, and will also violate our own written policies that the select board has adopted. Just to be clear, your motion goes against the grain of both of those things, and you're comfortable with that?
Yes.
I would.
Could I, through the, through the chair?
Before I speak, go ahead, Sheila.
I, I hear what everyone is saying, and Mitch, I hear what you're saying about the chair. So we've, and, and we've tried to tighten up these recommendations over time. I think we've talked about in the past how there are some communities where these appointments are a little bit more competitive in some cases than others, and in some they're not. Some, they have situations like ours where we're just thrilled to see people who are willing to serve their community. We have yet to have a scenario, certainly in Rutland, certainly in our neighboring communities, where when changes are coming, they don't come with a little bit of dissent. And I, so to Mitch's point about the chair's recommendation, I agree. We've been asking for that and their thoughts for quite some time. We've also asked in the past, and we've gotten away from it maybe the last couple of years, that the applicants come in and talk to us and meet with us before we make an appointment. And in this case, we've talked to none of them. And I think what I would add to that is.
The two of them are here, Sheila.
Well, what I would add to that is that the chair of the committee in question also has not had the opportunity yet to speak with them. And so as opposed to rushing the process, wouldn't we be better served, everyone in the community, by taking this as a learning opportunity of how to do this best practice, which is, there should be interviews for a competitive seat on a committee?
No, I, I don't agree with you, Sheila, and I think you said a whole bunch of nothing there. I think, look, here's why I don't agree with you, is because this opportunity wasn't afforded to any other board. We've been purposefully delaying the appointment of ConCom members. One of these individuals, we didn't even have application materials in hand prior to this, and these, these individuals have been up for reappointment since the end of the fiscal year.
And where are these people? They're not even here.
And the people, the, the two applicants that we have for reappointment are here, willing to talk to the board. The other two are not. One's not a registered voter. Neither of the individuals that made a motion for have letters of recommendation, and Jeff just willingly admitted that he's willing to make a motion, knowing that it violates state law, which I think is a huge mistake. But I guess he's out of country, so I mean, if he, you know, doesn't want to come back. But that's, you know, I think that you're, you're playing politics with the appointments. It's ridiculous, it's unfortunate. I know that, you know, personally, a couple you don't get along with the chair, that's not what this is about, right? So I don't understand why we're doing this. It just doesn't make any sense.
So I have, if I may, through the chair, some.
Go ahead, I have a comment, too.
So I, I have struggled with this, this set of appointments, because I've heard a lot of concern among our townspeople about the way the wetlands have been handled in town, the way, especially the wetlands have been handled in town. So I view it as a possible way to switch things up. It may or may not do much, but we have an opportunity to bring in new people and possibly change things up a little bit. On the flip side, as you mentioned, our policies do state that we should have a recommendation from the chair. However.
That we need to. We need to have a recommendation from the chair.
However, if there's things that are happening in town on these appointed commissions and committees that aren't up for the voter, voting public to have a say, the voting public has kind of put us in charge of these, correct? Am I, I mean, we're the ones that appoint them, so they don't, they're not elected officials.
Right, but we have policies in place to make sure that we don't politicize these appointments. Now, if we want to change the policies to say that to serve on a board in town, you have to politically agree with the chair, we can do that, but that's not what's currently written.
But I don't think, for me, it's not about politically agreeing with the chair or not. I'm listening to my people in the public, that a number of them have come to me with concerns about what's been happening with buildings near or on wetlands. And so my question is, if we have an opportunity to potentially change that with new members, a new member, new members, why not? If the voting public cannot go and elect or, or move these, move the boards and commissions, not, I mean, for any of these, that we're doing appointments?
Okay, my comment. We have two motions before the board. My opinion, I don't know if I'm correct or not, but I can only accept one motion. I don't think I can accept a motion that violates bylaws and statute. I can't accept that motion. So as far as the board's, I mean, the chairman's concerned, we only have one motion before the board. And that motion was to appoint Sean Moore and Peter Crane.
Do we have?
Well, I can, I'll, I'll amend the motion. Fillings to the, to the chair. Kevin Jarvey is immediately eligible, correct?
He has, he doesn't have a letter of recommendation. So per our policies, he's not, but I guess, per the kangaroo we're running, he is.
May I speak?
Go ahead, and I have some, some other people that want to speak, too.
Okay, I, I just want to clarify, the appointment policy asks for a recommendation from the chair. That does not give a de facto requirement to the board to take it. We, however, absolutely have asked for a recommendation from the active chair of the sitting committee, so that we know that that person has been kept in the loop. And we're hearing from Mr. Delacqua, who, you know, Mitch, I don't know why you're throwing stuff around. He and I have disagreements, but he and I also talk. I have a, I think, a good professional relationship, so it's unfortunate for me to hear that apparently I don't, according to you.
I didn't say that at all, Sheila. That's not what I said. I would appreciate if you did paraphrase things.
Okay.
Thank you.
So in any case, again, it is the board's purview to make these appointments, and I stand by what I said, and I didn't think I was being unclear. We ask for recommendations from the committee and commission chairs, such as they are.
We require.
We also used to ask that these people came in so that they could answer questions and meet with the board. And there have been many cases, and again, we're getting into, the town is changing. There have been many cases where there were people who maybe couldn't make it on our meeting night, and the position was uncontested, and there was no competition for it. And in this case, we have a different situation going on. So to your point about, and I, and I heard what everybody is saying about the registered voter, you know, we have a fairly long history, right, wrong, or indifferent, and we can talk about that later, but of making motions and taking votes on things pending other things happening. We just made one when we allowed a one-day liquor license to happen, pending the receipt of some documentation that we don't have yet. So I, I don't know that that alone, and there's other things going on. Again, I think we should be considering all the candidates together, but I'm not sure that that one criteria should be the reason we throw this out. This has been, you know, a process that isn't as clean as I'm sure we would like it.
No, it's been politicized. It's been purposefully politicized.
All right, let me take some comments.
Peter Crane, I am one of the members up for reappointment, to be clear. I recognize that I am seated at the pleasure of the board. I'm not asking that any particular weight, the fact that I have been on ConCom for the past several years is not important to this. I do, however, have a couple of questions. Why don't people come to ConCom with their questions? If they don't like the reasoning and the effects of the decisions of ConCom, why aren't they asking ConComs? And that includes all of you. Jeff had a conversation with me and with Joe very early in his tenure discussing specifically Poma Gussit Road, and we explained to him why there was no building on wetlands. I will stake every piece of professionalism that I have on that fact. Other people don't like it, but they don't understand that water does not automatically create a wetland. So if people don't come before the commission and ask the questions, how can we possibly know what people want to know and the confusion that they have to answer the questions and resolve the doubt? And to the second point that I want to make, Jeff, you've now disparaged the two members who are up for reelection by saying that one of them has been compromised. So now that you're trying to make that public, would you please go into more detail?
No.
So you are unwilling to be transparent in your transactions with the public? Is that what you're telling me?
I mean, I'm not subject to cross-examination, sir. I mean.
I think he is, being a select board member.
So then, what, now what I understand you to be saying is you have tyrant powers because no one can question you?
Yeah, asked and answered.
Can we move on to the next?
Thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
I believe I heard at one point that the Board of Selectment had been asking for letters of recommendation, as if they were not returned in a, or turned in in a timely manner. They were emailed by the Secretary of the Conservation Commission on 5:30, 2019, at 2:55 p.m. Both letters of recommendation.
So when, when did we receive, receive the applications for the, the new folks? Were they before or after 5:30?
Mr. Gentelucci's application was received 5:16.
Okay.
And Mr. Jarvey's application was received on 6:06.
But can I, in my mind, I mean, I'm not, I'm just taking this from a.
Excuse me, 6:5. I just want to get that for the record.
From a, it's not a first come, first serve. It's, we, am I correct? It's a, we need to evaluate all the candidates that we have before us.
Correct.
And do that. So they all came in at a similar time, but it's not a first come, first serve. I just wanted to clarify.
That's, that's correct. However, we have written policies in place that we've adopted as a board, and we receive all the information we need to go ahead with reappointments in seats that were not contested. But when you have certain board members that want to kick the can down the road to invite their friends, acquaintances, or whoever it may be, to serve in those seats and extend the process purposefully for that reason, it's a little bit disingenuous. And I think.
I'm correction, sir. I'm, I'm friends with none of the applicants.
I, I didn't say you. I just said in general, that could be something that could be optically looked at by the public, you know, because we had what we needed to move forward on May 30th, and one of those seats wouldn't have even been contested. I think, you know, it's, optically, it's a bad look for the board if we're going against our own policies and procedures, if we have motions to dis, you know, to just disqualify state procedures and state law. That's, you know, when you had said at the retreat, that you've heard from people in town that people have lost faith in the board, and this is exactly the reason why.
But again, I'm going back to, it's not a first come, first serve. You said.
I understand that.
We had everything, we could have acted on May 30th, but not everything, we didn't have all the applicants by May 30th. It's a July 1st appointment. It's not a first come, first serve. We need to look at what we have in front of us at the time of the appointment, obviously not extending it out till we collect applicants that we want, but we have four applicants in front of us. I don't think it would have been in the best interest of the town to have acted on the May 30th if, if we only had two applicants, not knowing that we were going to get more or not, or.
So if these two individuals were so interested in serving on ConCom, why have they not attended a single meeting to this point?
Not a prerequisite for applying or sending a letter of interest.
But a letter of recommendation is a prerequisite, and we're ignoring that. So are we, are we taking some prerequisites and not others, or what are we looking at here?
All right, is there anybody else in the public that wants to comment? Were you finished?
Yeah, no, I'm not finished. Jeff, one, one point that I need to make you aware of, because there are two sitting commissioners that you are essentially removing from their seats, you are required by you are required by law to hold a public hearing if they so request and state your causes for removal.
It's not removal, it's not removal, it's just the appointments have expired.
You can play the word game if you want, but if they request a public hearing, you're going to have to give them one.
We have four applicants for two expiring seats.
As far as I'm concerned, you've only got, you've got three.
We have the authority to appoint who we think is a legitimate applicant.
You've got three legitimate applicants. Right, one who has never come to a meeting. I don't know the gentleman. If I knew him, and he was the right fit for the town, because that's essentially why you people ask the question. You people asked, all right, and I'm giving you the answer. The question was, what applicants out of these four people do you think would do the best for the town of Rutland and the Conservation Commission? Right, and I'm basing, I'm not friends with either of those folks. I didn't know them until they started coming to CONCOM meetings. Then they expressed an interest in getting on the board. And as openings came up, I wrote letters of recommendation for them because they seized the initiative. All right, boards don't function very well with people that don't want to be there. Especially the volunteer board. There ain't that many people in town that want to go traipsing through swamps, coming out covered with all kinds of ticks on them, mosquito bites and everything else. If you don't come out with six ticks on you, you haven't been in there. All right, these people have done the duty. They've taken the classes that Mac puts on up at Holy Cross College. All right, they've got years of experience behind them now. And you ask me to weigh that against two unknowns. One who is ineligible, and the other is just still an unknown. All right, I'm not playing favorites here. I'm telling you, you asked me for my advice, I'm giving it. Pure and simple.
May I speak?
Go ahead Sheila.
I'm really uncomfortable with the idea of people who don't actually, who haven't actually come to a meeting in person, not being interested. We, that is, that is a burden and a bar that we shouldn't be placing on any resident, on any taxpayer. We don't know, because we haven't interviewed them partly, we don't know their level of involvement. We don't know if they're reading minutes online. We don't know if they're watching the televised meetings online. And all of us at some point have been newbies with no experience. And so, you know, to set that kind of a bar, and you know, we've certainly heard in the past sometimes people saying that about town meeting attendees. Oh, they've never come to a town meeting before. That's not the point. Everyone is entitled to this. I feel like everybody is entitled to, you know, get their voices heard. And so again, I'm not clear, knowing that this is a competitive process. I'm not clear on the rush. I feel like there are still some pieces that aren't in place yet, and that would be interviews by the chair of the commission. If Mr. Delacqua is willing to reach out to the two that he doesn't know, and possibly to interview the two that he does, and say, what makes you want to continue to do this? It's a competitive process this year, it's a little different than it has been. And for all four of those people to come before the board as well, and have it be public, and have it be a public process.
Anybody else in the audience want to speak?
Sean McGlaughlin, 175 Barrett Baxton Road. It's very complicated that this process has been going on. And I don't understand, if an applicant is interested in a position, wouldn't they be forwarding and talking to the individual in charge of that department? Prior to the applicant going before the selectman? Wouldn't they want to go to the meetings to be involved and talk to the chairman? I just don't understand why this process is being dragged out and it's being made so difficult. I mean, I don't, I don't know any of these applicants, but it's just, it's disheartening to see the select board do what they're doing right now with the appointment of positions where you've had people in the position, you have recommendations, I just don't understand it. It just, it's, this is why the public is so discouraged with the selectmen and all these, the stuff that's going on in town. I just don't get it. It seems to be a simple process to me, and it's becoming clear that it's not the way it should be. I mean, we're looking at violations of state law and overriding them. I just don't, I don't get that. No matter who it is, whether it was me or someone else. I don't, I don't see how that benefits the town at all. I don't. But that's me, that's my two cents.
All right, thank you Phil. Anybody else? Go ahead, sir. Name and address.
Hi, Kevin Jarvey, 8 Hillside Road. Just to speak on the past couple of comments, two and a half or three years ago, I decided that I wanted to run for the Board of Assessors. And during that time, it was short-lived, there wasn't a lot of time in between. I wasn't able to attend any meetings, I wasn't able to talk to anybody. There was some openings that were, needed to get filled. It happened very, very quickly, so I wasn't able to do any of that. But I did it because I wanted to be on the board, and I wanted to help the town. And since that time, I believe that we've made some phenomenal policies. I've been chairman of the Board of Assessors for the past two years. And I think I've done a really good job on that board, and I think that the whole board has come together and has been better than it was previously. So the same thing came up in the Conservation Commission where I saw an opportunity to run. I put in my name and my letter of intent. I was not aware that it was a prerequisite to attend meetings or a prerequisite to communicate with any of the existing board members or chairman of any of the boards. I didn't think that by not doing that, it would look that negatively upon me. Apparently it did. And if I had known that three, four weeks ago, or again, timeframe, I'm not exactly sure, I would have gone to some of those other meetings. During some of the Conservation Commission meetings, I was in attendance at AGCOM meetings as well, trying to help out over there. Not that I'm a member of that board, but as I did some of those meetings, the CONCOM meetings were happening at the same time. There was some scheduling issues over the past couple of weeks. So my apologies for not doing that ahead of time, but I don't want that to negatively affect your decision on my interest in CONCOM or the things that I want to do, just try to help CONCOM and the town of Rutland. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Mike Whiteman, 28 East County Road. If there's displeasure that expressed with the board of selectmen, I could also say that it might be from the perspective of just going with what the status quo is. So if that's the way that it's been done in the past, who's to say that changing something up, trying something new, is not the best way to go forward? You learn from mistakes, you grow. Now, in response to things where people are saying, well, we just can't show up. If you're relatively new, and you're relatively new to the interest of joining and actually being a public servant, it's like being a new resident in town. And you don't know what's going on left and right. You see other families participating because they've been there, they've been doing it for a while. It's not like there's this big public message board that's in the middle of town that says, show up for this, show up for that. You do have to go through and hunt for it. So to say that people aren't showing up is just because they're a friend of X, Y, and Z, doesn't seem to be absolutely truly honest in terms of why they're not there. Perhaps they have other responsibilities, whether it be work, whether it be after-school activities, whether it be having kids. You eventually make time in your schedule for that once you get to that point, and you know it's now a commitment. So saying that it's a requirement that they show up and speak to people firsthand, it would be great, giving them the opportunity to do so and scheduling it with them, and having them show up, papers in hand, ready to discuss for an hour, in front of those that are going to make the decision, seems to be the most relevant choice, in my opinion. I don't know if it's possible to say, okay, well, given another, however many days, however many weeks, but if those formal offers to sit down and meet with you guys is not followed through with, it doesn't seem like you are doing your due diligence, and it seems like you are just settling with that status quo. Thank you.
To the chair, can I just address the individual here? Thank you for speaking up. I think when you say it shouldn't be a prerequisite to go, I think that's correct. I think the issue here, and I hope you can understand, is that we have our own set of policies as a board we've approved on how to make these appointments to ensure that the individual is interested. Either reach out to the chair or talk to the chair, who then will provide a letter of recommendation about that individual. That protects the board from politicizing appointments. That protects the public because it allows a level of separation between individuals serving and the Board of Selectmen so that there's no appearance that the Board of Selectmen is filling those vacant seats with people that they may know, with friends, family, things like that. So those policies are in place to make sure that we have a diverse mix of people with different opinions and political affiliations that serve simply because they want to serve, and not because they agree or disagree with any certain individual. And that's, I think, the issue. The issue isn't the folks not attending, it's that we have policies, and if we were to vote in the individuals tonight that do not have letters of recommendation, it would not only be breaking our own internal policies, but it would be breaking state law.
A loud response. So if you actually gave that opportunity and scheduled those meetings, and they did have a conversation with the head of that committee, who's to say that that opinion won't necessarily change? Who's to say that he might not go ahead and issue a recommendation and retract the other one?
Right.
I don't know. I don't see it as necessarily anything that's political. I mean, if everybody has a genuine interest in it, and their first priority is for the betterment of the town, I don't see how that's mixed into politics. Like whether you're red, whether you're blue, whether you're purple, doesn't matter. I don't see how that's relevant at all when it comes to filling the appointment and holding up the charter of that particular committee. It's Conservation Committee, I don't know how that can be, maybe I'm just ignorant to that. Everything's politicized, I don't know. But it seems like they should be separate regardless of whatever you might be saying there.
And I think that's what we're saying the same thing.
Okay. So yeah, my, as just an average citizen, I would just say, make that, make those scheduled meetings with them, sit down with the four of them, and then now you have a genuine, open kind of conversation with them, and you know where they all stand, get their credentials. Just being there because you're the one that raised your hand and nobody else did at that particular time, doesn't mean you should necessarily, in perpetuity, go forward, regardless of whether or not you know the chairman. Thank you.
As far as evaluating the candidates, we've probably dropped the ball ourselves by not doing that before July 1st. But we're two weeks into the new fiscal year. I have two motions before the board. One I can accept, and the second was amended.
Was amended for the one individual?
Yeah. Was amended to...
Mitch made a motion to appoint Peter and Sean. Jeff originally made a motion for Kevin and Jared, and then amended to remove Jared and just do Kevin.
All right. On the first motion, the first motion was to appoint Sean and Peter. I'll second that emotion, that emotion, that motion myself.
You're seconding?
What was that?
Can you repeat what you just seconded, Wayne?
I seconded the motion to appoint Sean and Peter. Now I'm asking for a second for the motion that you made.
We have to do a vote separately?
Yeah, you have to do one at a time.
All right.
So it's a motion to second for the reappointment of Sean and Peter.
All right, so we have the motion. Is there any further discussion on the first motion for appointment of Sean Moore and Peter Grant? No more discussion?
Can I just, or do you have to discuss to the board?
Go ahead.
Clee Blair, 8 Heritage Hill Drive. I want to comment a little bit about what Leah said. Just, if you don't know, do any of you guys know what you do when you go to see the Conservation Commission? Do you, Jeff? So you go there.
Yeah, tell us all about it quick.
Okay, so I just, what I wanted to just tell you was, you file what's called a notice of intent. So the notice of intent says, this is what we intend to do in the buffer zone. And the commission.
Is this about the candidates or about the policy?
It's about the policy, I want to just kind of answer what she's saying. She says she wants to change the board because of what she's hearing from people in the town. What people in town are saying are things like, wetlands are getting filled, and this, that, the other. These guys use consultants to determine wetland lines. We, they don't, the board doesn't determine that, in most cases. It's done by consultant, outside consultants. And then the board has to know what is allowed and what isn't allowed in the buffer zone. If you can, if you're appointing people that don't, have never done this and don't know what they're doing, you're doing a disservice to the town. I mean, these two people, Joe knows them really well, that serve on the board, they're the best candidate to protect the wetlands in this town. It's, and if you had any real idea what it took, you wouldn't even think of appointing anybody else.
All right, thank you. Anything further before we go on to the first motion? First motion.
May I?
Oh, go ahead.
May I ask why we're not having a conversation about legitimate interviews for all four of these candidates, both with the chair of conservation and with the board in public?
Repeat that question.
I'm wondering why we're not having a further conversation on what, to me, the next step should appropriately be, which is the due diligence of the board to choose the right people for the job, who may or may not be the ones who have been doing it. But they might be, we don't actually know that without comparing them, and we haven't done that effectively yet. The chair has not been given the opportunity to effectively interview the other two candidates. Would be appropriate to give him the time to do that. At this point, his recommendation is based on absence rather than on an actual interview. And I would speak, you know, just to finalize that, you know, to Mitch's point about politicization of this process, you know, it's the same thing, and I'm not saying it's the same thing here. I want to make very clear that I'm making, saying this as a general comment. That type of action is just as possible from a chair of an appointed committee as it is from an elected board. Now, the difference is, and actually, there's not much difference. I was going to say, the difference is, the elected board is elected, and they each have one voice, but of course, the chair has been voted on and recommended by a board of his or her peers. But the threat of politicizing, of being, making this political is still there regardless of the position. So again, my request for doing these interviews, sitting down and being able to say, we've spoken with all of these people, we've met with all of these people, and we can make some sort of decision based on objectives and objective data, rather than what's, you know, what we're kind of doing tonight. I would prefer to not rush this, try to do it right. And I, you know, I guess, having lived through only a couple of these, and I don't think the town of Rutland is alone in this, these transitions can be hard sometimes, and not pretty. It's obviously easier sometimes to not have competition for all of this. But I don't know that that is supposed to take away our responsibility for ensuring that the best people are in the jobs. That's our, that's our job.
Thank you Sheila.
I, if I may through the chair.
Go ahead.
I like the idea of doing the formal interviews. I wish we would have done this kind of forethought and done it for this meeting, so that way we could move forward. But I do appreciate that. I feel like that would in some ways de-politicize it because it feels very politicized right now with the conversations going on with us, the conversations with CONCOM. Like, can we all get in the room and, or at least make the individuals known to each other?
We have a motion on the floor we need to vote for first.
Again, I would think that we dropped the ball, we should have done that before now.
Right.
Again, we're two weeks into the next fiscal year. And we do have a motion on the floor, and we have a second. And if...
Kevin Jarvey, 8 Hillside Road. Just as one of the candidates, had I known that an interview process would have benefited my appointment, had I known that attending those meetings, had I known all of that, then it would have happened. Had I, you know, you tell me now that within the next 30 days, we'd like to see A, B, and C, we'd like to see you do this, you know, I'd be more than willing to do whatever the board would like to fulfill your needs as far as appointment. And had I known... to fulfill your needs as far as appointment. And had I known that, I would have, I would have done that previous to tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Just real quick, because we have members remote participating, every vote needs to be a roll call.
Okay. All right. Again, we have the motion to appoint Sean Moore and Peter Crane. Motion was made and seconded. There's no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Walker, aye. Those opposed?
Dang, no.
Waitman, aye, or no.
Um, nay, and I want to add for the record, my vote is not based on the applicants. It's just based on wanting to see a more complete process.
To the Chair, can I make a request of Mike? A public records request for any emails sent from any board members to any of the applicants for ConCom about this process? Thank you.
I'll get that to Anita to finalize it.
Do you have the names down and how they voted?
Yes.
All right.
We don't need the exact, just because of tally reasons, master general law and the open meeting law require a roll call.
All right. So we have motion number two, which was made to appoint Kevin Jarvey to the Conservation Commission. I do not have a second on that motion. With no second, I guess we'll just end the discussion.
Can, can I put a motion that we continue with interviews or follow up, to continue to move the process along? Currently, it stays that Peter and Sean are de facto still on because there's no, no appointments been made, correct? So can we move forward with kind of board interviews for these contested positions? Because I don't think in the past we've had contested positions for boards and commissions for which the select board are responsible for appointments.
It doesn't seem like you really need a motion to do that because we just voted down a motion to appoint two people. So those two people are going to continue on the board.
Right. I didn't know if we need an emotion to...
Until we make some kind of decision.
I didn't know if we needed a motion to move forward with that.
What do you think? I don't think so.
No, we can just schedule that.
Okay.
I'd just like to answer, Leah, if I might.
Yeah. If, I mean...
This, our particular board, over the years, has had, fortunately, many applicants, and many content, many positions were contested. And the select board and myself have always worked together, come up with the best candidates. Sorry to see that process end, but you, you don't have the history. I've been on the board for 15 years, and I've seen a lot of contests. And it's always been a hand in glove condition that exists between Conservation Commission and the Board of Selectmen. And we've had many good applicants, we've had some that didn't, didn't work out. But we have had contested, if you will, I like to call it contested, I think it's multiple applicants for a position. And we've had to make a decision based on what we collectively thought was the best.
And in the past, has that been kind of, has there been a conversation among, kind of you as ConCom Chair, or whoever the ConCom Chair is, and the board, or has it predominantly...
I don't make decisions in a vacuum. The discussion first takes place in the ConCom with all of the members. All right. The members get to know someone by them coming to meetings. All right. The Board of Selectmen may have interviewed in the past. I don't know what their procedure exactly was. All right. But the ConCom would make the recommendation. It's not made in vacuum by me alone. When I make a recommendation, it's because the Conservation Commission has said we want this, we think this person will be the best fit. Just, just pointed information, that's all.
No, I appreciate it. Thank you.
So you do need a motion.
Okay. So I'll make a motion that the board continue to work with Conservation Commission and the four applicants, assuming they're still interest, three applicants, the applicants, assuming they're still interested, to continue to vet and hopefully appoint. Is that a...
Second.
You got all that?
Yep.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed?
Nay.
Thank you. We have two more appointments, Historical Commission and Town Council.
Ms. Lynn Turcot is a new applicant for the Historical Commission. You'll notice, unlike the last one that we did last week, this is only a two-year appointment. That's because, due to attrition on the board from people who have chosen not to reapply and those that are no longer with us. Again, there is no current members on the Historical Commission aside from the one that we appointed last week. Even if Ms. Turcot is appointed tonight, they still wouldn't be able to meet because there'd only be two members, and we're required to have an odd number of members. So we're still looking for an applicant for a one-year seat for the Historical Commission. We did a three-year last time, a two-year this time, and a one-year. Once that's restaggered, it'll be a three-year appointment after that, and that process was cleared by our legal counsel as part of the general process for common law towns like us that don't have a charter.
All right.
And we have a letter here from Ms. Lynn Turcot stating her interest. That was, I think, our holdup last time, was we didn't have anything official. It was just kind of...
Correct. Do we want to interview this person before we move forward?
It's not a contested, I mean, it's not a contested seat, so...
All right. So I'll accept the motion.
I mean, you want to bring her in. We can talk to her, but...
No. I don't see any need for that.
I'll make a motion to appoint Lynn Turcot to our Rutland Historic Society.
Is she a registered voter?
Historic Commission.
Do I have a second?
Wait, Jeff had a question.
Jeff asked if she's a registered...
Jeff, did you have a question?
I'll second it. Still in second.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Dang, aye.
Those opposed? Passed. Town Council?
I took the board's request that they made of my office to review the two together, speaking with both firms. The firm that Attorney Copelman is currently at was about 50% more expensive than Copelman and Page, I mean, excuse me, than KP Law. Can't say that anymore. And we would have two attorneys assigned to the town where we currently have eight, and a ninth that was just assigned to the town. So that is why I'm recommending KP Law, just based off of quality of service and price.
Great.
Thank you for looking into that.
Oh, no problem.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that the town use KP Law as our town council.
Do I have a second?
Go away. Second.
Any further discussion? No further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Unanimous. On that set. Next, Lynn Woodfield.
You have before you all a copy of the proposal submitted by Rutland Youth Soccer. This was the only proposal that the town received in response to the request for proposals that was put forward by the board. This was also all emailed to the board early last week, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. I also see that we have some representatives here from Rutland Youth Soccer. I'm happy to move forward with the pleasure of the board.
Anybody have any comments? Do we have any kind of a motion then? Discussion, anything?
The, if a motion were to be made on this, it'd be a motion to, a motion to award the proposal.
How long is the, how long is the lease? Is this a 10-year?
Yes.
With options to renew?
Yes.
I think we tried to get those, the same as, the same terms as Marsh, right? Like the same terms, right?
Yep.
Mike, could you clarify for the board and the audience the process once that, you know, if the RFP were to be granted relative to negotiations for lease? We have a lot that still has to happen.
Yeah. So we would negotiate the lease with my office and with representatives of Rutland Youth Soccer, similar to how we negotiated the lease with Marsh Field. The lease would then have to be approved by, approved and signed by the Board of, by the Select Board. That lease discussion would also include any requirement set forth, needing approval from any other departments, the DPW, the Fire Department, Police Department, and so on from there, just the exact same process that we followed with Marsh Field. And then that would, once signed by the board, that would then allow, if awarded, Rutland Youth Soccer to commence with any activity on the field. But until that's signed, it's still considered property of the town, and the applicant would not be allowed to commence any work on that field until signed.
To the Chair, can I have a question? Can I? Will members not, will youngsters not affiliated with Rutland Youth Soccer have any availability or time to use the space in addition to your programming?
It really comes down to the lease agreement with the town as to whether or not we're allowed to utilize the fields for that purpose.
Is that something you would be open to, though, if asked?
I mean, I don't think we're really looking at it as strictly Rutland Youth Soccer. I mean, we'd be managing it, but if there were other, you know, soccer groups or kids that were looking for it, and we weren't using it at that time for our, you know, for our season, and, you know, as well as the school, then yeah, sure, I mean, we'd be open for discussion.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
I know that was one of the big questions about Marsh, so I was gonna...
Yep.
Jeff, any questions, comments?
No, I apologize. I don't have the RFP in the documents in front of me, so I'm just listening in.
Sheila, anything further?
Uh, no, other than to say, just for the record, you know, obviously, the Marsh Field lease renewal took some time as we updated a lot of things, and we had a lot of things to consider that maybe weren't a consideration back in the day when it was first generated. And I wouldn't want anyone to think that this lease is going to be a carbon copy. It's going to be based off of the experience with Marsh, but obviously, it's a very different animal in some respects. So to Mitch's point about access, that needs to be a separate question.
In terms of, you mean you want them to address it now outside of the lease process?
No. I, I'm just saying that the outcome of the lease wouldn't necessarily be an exact mirror of the Marsh situation.
Okay.
Because I agree. I, I think that public access, considering the location of that field and how much space it's going to take up, that needs to, that needs to be a conversation.
Good. Any other comments?
Yeah, I just, I, I think that, I like, I know there's been some contention, you know, between different parties on this project, but, you know, I think anything to really help kids with these activities is beneficial. And I know that Watts uses it. Those teams are very competitive, so anything to give our kids kind of the edge. Again, as a father of a daughter coming any day now, and of a wife who is kind of all-state soccer, I'm kind of pushing for that scholarship. So I really can appreciate kind of the work you guys put into this. So thank you.
All right. Anybody have a motion for me?
Motion to accept RFP as received by the town, award, I'm sorry, motion to award the RFP as received by the town, unless there are any more questions or concerns from the public.
Hearing none. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further questions, comments, or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Unanimous. Interdepartmental transfers.
So we only have one warrant left before we close out fiscal year 19. These, just for clarification, and this is why we have two warrants at the beginning of the meeting today, is that even though the fiscal year concluded on June 30th, bills were still coming in that were dated before June 30th, that were still yet to arrive in the mail. So we actually keep the books open up until July 30th, even though anything new coming in counts toward the new fiscal year. So this is to cover some of the funding for that. All of the ones before you have been approved by the Finance Committee and the Town Accountant, and those signed copies are in the signature folder that'll be distributed to the board members following the adjournment of today's meeting. The first one before you is somewhat silly, and I dare to say this is my fault. When doing the slew of interdepartmental transfers that we had the last time, one project that was supposed to be taken out of a different account was taken out of town administrator salary. So while I did have $26,000 originally left in the account, the wrong project was taken out of that account, so now I am short $690.72 from that account. So just looking to take that out of Fire Department part-time wages, which is our on-call firefighters, which currently has a balance of $7,854.20, just to bring that back to zero again. A reason why that account is so high is because the, we have to call our on-call firemen as often as we do.
So is that, that balance is going to be turned back in?
Yeah.
Do we need to go through these one by one?
Yeah.
Okay. So, you want me to go through them?
All right.
I'll make a motion to transfer $690.72 from account number 001-220-5120-000 to account number 001-129-5110-000.
Anybody second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Unanimous. You're on the roll.
Okay. I was, I can just go through them all. Okay.
Nope.
Um, I make a motion to transfer $6,000 from account number 001-421-5130-000, Highway Wages, to account number 001-151-5200-000, Town Council Purchase Services for outstanding bills.
Can I have a discussion? Why are we transferring money from Highway Wages to Town Council Purchase Services?
So, sure. We, the money left in Highway Wages, the $73,433.90, is because there was a highway position that was fully funded in the budget process but never failed during the fiscal year. So that is why we have that amount remaining. The, we budget $30,000 a year for Town Council due to an ongoing lawsuit that the town is currently in, that specific details can't be discussed due to the nature of the lawsuit still ongoing, plus the review of plans that were previously confidential that have been submitted to the Planning Board that are now public from Dunkin' Donuts for the property owned by Mr. Papearsky on Main Street. Those two items set us over $30,000. So the reason why it's a $6,000 transfer, even though it looks as though the account is only in the red by $1,800, is because of a bill that should, that came in after. This was printed early today to cover the difference of those two. There should be $50 left in the account to the transfer.
Okay. So we need more than budgeted Town Council services because of lawsuits against the town and because of additional activities through plans?
Correct.
Need to be reviewed?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Do I have a second?
Mitch, sorry, could I second? Just for discussion, to Mitch's point, if any members of... Just for discussion, to Mitch's point, if any members of the board wanted to take a look at our historicals for legal, we've hovered between $20,000 and $25,000, and then when Margaret came, up to $30,000, mainly because at the end of almost every fiscal year, we were taking money from Reserve Fund in order to cover legal bills. So this kind of predates even KP, but it's something we could certainly take a longer look at relative to how we fund that line item and how much we do in a given year when it comes to legal. So for example, when Margaret came, we had a lot of resource stuff going on that required legal assistance.
No, I appreciate that Sheila, that wasn't really my question, but the background's always good to have.
Our legal bills are also confirmed by KP to be full of public record, so if anyone wants to take a look at those two, they're available in Mrs. Paradise's office.
Great, thank you.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 opposed? Known, passed?
Aye.
Unanimous.
I'll make a motion to request $300 from account number 001-220-5120-000, Fire Part-Time Wages, to account number 001-129-5200-001, Woodhouse Purchased Services for electric bills.
Any explanation on that?
Sure, this, the Woodhouse Purchased Services covers the Wood Studio building. The Woodhouse itself is under lease agreement with the Historical Society. This, we moved $90.67 in at the last Select Board meeting, and I said I would look into that because of that, because it was odd that this account would go over when the Wood Studio is so small. After viewing, reviewing it, the National Grid Bill put it over, but the way that we currently have our setup with Nexamp is that the National Grid Bill comes in and then a week and a half later, the Nexamp Bill comes in. And so Nexamp provides us the credits for our electric bill and then sends us a bill for those credits. Now, this is something that Administrator Nardowitz, when she was here, had asked Mrs. Paradise to review and track to see if we're actually getting our money's worth out of the credits, so this is something that is ongoing and being studied by her. The full year should be completed in September, that way we can get a full year's worth of data to see just how much, that way it's not a varying rate between summer and winter and stuff like that. I believe that these high electric bills at the end of the year are being caused by the air conditioning in the building and people forgetting to shut it off after it's done, so we're looking at getting a box.
Or close the windows with the air conditioner running.
Exactly, so things like that, and just educating people who are using that space just to double-check those. Now, not every group, and I don't want to come off as saying that at all, it's just certain times it's happened where the building's not used for two days and then whoever comes in after those two days finds that the air is still on and things like that.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Was there a second to that?
Aye.
Yes, second.
I'll make a motion to transfer $3,000 from account number 001-421-5130-000, Highway Wages, to account number 001-429-5200-000, Town Garage Purchase Services for outstanding bills.
This is a bill that came in after we moved money last time regarding repairs made to a truck that broke down. If you remember, the last time we moved money into here, it was due to repairs related to snow and ice. This one was a non-snow and ice related repair that happened, and the bill just happened to come in after we already moved the money over.
Okay. Second motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Unanimous.
I'll make a motion to transfer $700 from account number 001-421-5130-000, Highway Wages, to account number 001-421-5400-000, Highway Supplies for the purchase of miter saw.
This is a request from Director Buckley, the miter saw that they currently have broke and is no longer usable. This is probably over what we're going to spend, and we understand that there's some contingency costs in there, just in case there's any additional shipping or something of that nature. If it needs a certain blade, we don't know, because we want to get the money. Where, we, by Massachusetts 30B, we're required to receive the appropriation before we can go and get the machine itself. But anything that's not used falls into free cash. And now that the end of the fiscal year is here, anything that's not used by next week falls to free cash.
Second motion.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, unanimous.
I'll make a motion to transfer $1,236 from account number 001-220-5120-000, Fire Part-Time Wages, to account number 001-220-5400-000, Fire Department Supplies for the purchase of GIS mapping software.
Just on this one, this one had previously come before the Board and passed, however, when it went before Finance Committee, they felt that it would be better accounting to show that the different departments that use this software are contributing to that software going forward. So since this is used by the DPW, the Fire Department, and the Police Department, it, the next three are all the same, it's for purchase of the GIS license to use the software, but it's coming out of the three departments that use it. So you'll see there's one license for the Fire Department, one license for the Police Department, and because the license is device-specific for this version of the software, there's two licenses for the DPW, one for the in-the-field tablet and one for the Director's desktop.
Great.
And that adds up to the amount we had previously?
The amount, correct.
Okay.
I think it's a great tool, I really do, so I think this is, this is definitely a worthwhile investment.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Unanimous.
I'll make a motion to transfer $1,236 from account number 001-220-5120-000, Fire Part-Time Wages, to account number 001-210-5400-000, Police Department Supplies for their share of the purchase of GIS mapping software.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Unanimous.
I'll make a motion to transfer $2,472 from account number 001-220-5120-000, Fire Part-Time Wages, to account number 001-421-5400-000, Highway Admin Supplies for the purchase of the GIS mapping software.
Again, this is two licenses.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Just as a comment on that, these are three-year licenses, and it's with the intent that when these licenses expire, the departments that are now paying for that will budget for that in their normal operating budget.
Perfect.
And there's a note for budget in three years?
Correct.
That it needs to be budgeted?
Yeah.
Love sustainability.
Yeah, perfect.
I'll make a motion to transfer $7,020 from account number 231-5120, Ambulance Wages, to account number 192-5200-005, Public Safety Building Purchase Services, to be used to paint the public safety building, all doors and trims, which will be combined, encumbered into fiscal year 2019, or 2020, sorry.
Just as a note on this one, this one did not come from me or my office, this came from Chief Knight. The reason why my signature is on it and it says at the request of the Town Administrator is because when this came before the Finance Committee on Thursday, they amended the account that this was going into. The original request by the chief was to place this money into ambulance purchase services, but Finance Committee thought it would be easier accounting to show that the money was actually going to a repair of, or work done toward the public safety building, that it should go into Public Safety Building Purchase Services.
What is the total cost for painting this paint, this particular project?
The next two pages were the proposal from Chief Knight, so you can see a detailed invoice in a proposal that was done there.
Did we reach out to see if we could have this donated?
I can certainly check with the chief on that one. Again, this was the proposal that originated from him to the Finance Committee. Through the strong chief statute, he can submit that directly himself. I can say that, having spoken to our Town Accountant, who has signed off on this, the reason why he requested that this official transfer be made is that since the work's probably not going to be done until after the FY19 books are closed, this is the only way that money could be encumbered. So the, I know Chief Knight's original idea on it is that, if you remember, or you weren't a member of the Board yet, but for those members who were there, there was a brief meeting of the Select Board and Finance Committee immediately before Town Meeting to make a reserve fund transfer for the purchase of new doors for the public safety building, with the reason being that during the windstorms that happened, one of the doors got blown off the hinges and the other ones were in need of repair. So one, that door being unopenable kind of set the stage for the three to be replaced, they came unpainted. So at first, the idea was to just paint those three doors, but then Chief Knight thought, we're already got a painter out here for those doors, why not just do the rest of the building?
Didn't we get the Central Office Building painted for by the Sheriff's Office?
Yes.
Would it be wise, rather than the town paying for this, to see if we, I mean, we have builders in town as well that I'm sure may perhaps want to donate, or is essentially a small painting job, that we can do versus paying for this out of pocket? Is that something we can explore?
Yeah, that's, yeah, if that's the pleasure of the Board, I'm happy to check into that.
But we need, if we don't approve this transfer now, then it doesn't happen, correct? The money would go to free cash, is that?
No, it would, the last, there'd be one more chance for it to happen at the July 29th meeting.
I, I would think that we should see if we have someone that's willing to come in and just paint it as a donation to the Fire Department prior to the town spending tax money on it, especially since we'll probably need to refer it to legal for all our pending lawsuits at some point anyway, so.
One thing I will say, just for the record too as well, the question was asked at the Finance Committee meeting, why this proposal wasn't taken out of the 250 Public Safety Building renovation account? The reason being for that is the money that was collected originally for that account was put into a trust fund with the stipulation that the town could only use the interest on that. In 2012, a couple tens of thousands of dollars were used to replace the Fire Department doors for the trucks by then Chief Rashala, and then when Chief Knight started, another couple thousand dollars were used to replace all the windows in the public safety building. And where interest rates have been so low after those large withdrawals, there isn't that much funding available to use that account, so that is why that account wasn't put forward for this. Just to get that out there, since that was a question that was asked by another Board of the Board.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, well, I'm more than happy, more than supportive to give the chief whatever he needs, but if we have another chance to approve this prior and we can get some donated funds into there, and maybe he needs something else that these funds can be better appropriated for, that would be my thought on.
Should we get two weeks to look into it?
Yeah.
Call the Sheriff's Office. Is everybody good with that?
Get a little recall.
I just, sorry, I just wanted to add that the quote that he had is from an in-town painter, so it's, I mean, it's money that would be staying in town, but just, I totally understood, understands your point, I think it's valid for sure, so.
This would be the table till the next meeting, table of withdrawal for the next meeting based on?
So I'll amend my motion to withdraw the motion for the $7,020 transfer and table at the next meeting.
Thank you. Town signs.
We have Mr. Steiner with us here today to give a presentation on his preliminary design of the Welcome to Rutland signs, and I've got the official drawing here for the Board to view, and you have copies of this in effect.
I'm Franz Steiner, 198 Glenwood of Steiner Signs. I've been in town, lived in town for over 35 years. The layout you have in front of you, Mike and I have talked, and I presented combinations of sizes depending on the locations that you might want to go on the town. That's a hand-carved sign. The material that you see there is an inch and a half high-density urethane foam. For the past 20 years, that's all we use now, we don't use any mahogany or sugar pine. It doesn't rot, doesn't check, doesn't warp. The lettering that you see there, Welcome to Rutland, and the tree are all hand carved, and that's pure gold, 23-karat gold leaf. The reason for a gold leaf, it's, one, looks beautiful, but also you don't have any issues with the weather, with ultraviolet infrared light. We use maroon because when I did all the youth programs, when we built the basketball court, when we did the, the town pool house, maroon was always the color of Rutland. That color is up to you, what you want to use. Would strongly recommend not to use red or blues, they fade and they're the worst colors outside, black is the best, but maroon or dark greens work well. I gave you price ranges on the quotes for different sizes on different locations, and the other idea which was brought up to me was the sponsor sign. That will allow you, from businesses or families or whatever, depending on your price range and how you want to market that, you can raise money for the sign at a long term, depending on how you want to do it. That's how we built the basketball court, that's how we put in the new scoreboards in the school aquag, that's how we did everything at that time in the late 90s and early 2000s. So you can have it as small as you want for families, or you can go with businesses on that, that gives you a wide-range option. So the big thing is just location. Other thing I stressed on the location is for snow issues, plowing, and then cost visibility. And then the other part of the quote was an LED message board sign. That I strongly recommend that you go with only one or two companies that are national because of the high-tech issue and the warranties that go into it. And then the other thing is we did a header for that message board, so it'd give the same look to the town, the carving, whatnot, and it gives it a nice custom effect. But that's a whole other issue as far as pricing, and also the warranties are big and real important, because you can get wireless, and then with the signed bylaws, which I, years ago, there's some people here that I was real involved in getting that, the multiple color LED, which is, you know, I would stay away, plus you'd have to get a special pass through the Planning Board and the Building Department for that, the way the bylaws were written. And that's it. Any questions you have on it, I can, I can answer.
Is the sponsor panel a removable panel?
Yes. I had other suggestions to Mike to move it, to put it down below the sign, and depending on the amounts, when we did the basketball court and raised money, we had it everywhere from $10 to $5,000, so that families, people, everyone could get involved, and we raised over 80,000. And that's when we did the scoreboards, we raised money, and when, at that time, we had such a good rapport with the whole community and even the school system, because we worked out an aquag and we, we did the scoreboards. I refinished the floors year after year so we could play all year round, and we were big then, but I mean, that gives you the option to do things. It all depends how you sell this, meaning, you know, how much money you want to do, how long you want to do it, it gives you a wide range. So that's why that was, and it, I think that's a good idea, they, Mike had thrown that out, and we, that's what we designed for you.
The, having done some research into what other towns have done that have done a sponsor panel on it, some locations have done pay for the sign and you get your business name up there for X amount of years, some people have just done a open donate and get your name listed. It's more cumbersome to have a business logo on the sponsor panel, you get into different colors, you get into different issues there, you get into sizes of being able to read rather than just the business's name. Plus, if you, if we were to go with an open donate and get your name on the sign rather than donate X and get Y, there's space issues that come into it there as well. So I am working on coming up for a proposal for a future Board meeting as to So I am working on coming up for a proposal for a future board meeting as to, this is my recommendation as to how we should go forward with this. But we do have the gift account that was created at the last board meeting for people to begin donating if they wish towards these signs.
I want to say something. The key point is logo design, because a lot of logo designs aren't designed for distance. And what we used to do when we started and we worked with the baseball field, Little League field, when it was being built, and when I did all the signs for that, no logos. And if there was, we kept it as simple as possible, and we tried to make it, because it's a distance. But that's a key point, because some, and then colors. I mean, you can get a pink and purple, it will look hideous. So keep it one color, keep it straight, simple, and also readability, which is important. People won't, and even designers, we get them all the time at agencies, and they don't understand that. So that's, that's a real important point.
That proposal will also have proposed locations.
I was going to ask, are there location proposals involved also?
And then the last thing I just want to point out here, for those of you who can see this, and Jeff and Sheila, you have the, this design scanned, it was sent out to the members of the board with their packets this afternoon, is if you look at the top corner, that's the actual.
Yeah, that's a deep maroon, burgundy or maroon.
Since the printer kind of dulls it out a little bit.
Is there, can we speak to the history behind that color in town? Is there a history with that color specifically? I know Jeff had made a comment.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we, years ago, with the planning board, of course, and the historical society, yeah, maroon, and I, we, our uniforms, when we went all over New England for the kit with our teams, it was always maroon and white, or maroon and white with a little green. But that was always, and then, like, the tree that you see there, it's, I can't do that in the layouts, but we call it scalloping, and we hand carve, we leaf the tree out, it looks sharp, it gives it a 3D look, and, but it was always, always maroon. And I don't know exactly why, but we've always done it.
If you go into the town annex too, you can see that periodically the historical society changes the different things in the cases as you first walk in there. And it's the old Rutland High colors from before.
Yeah, 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 that's correct.
And then I asked Mr. Steiner to put the tree, just because I think it's kind of cool with the center tree that we have, and being where the sign will say center of Massachusetts geographic center or something like that, that we mark where the center in town is.
That's great. I remember when the city of Worcester started branding all of their street signs with the heart, for the heart of the Commonwealth.
Yeah.
So I think stuff like that, I mean, to tie into the town's history, I think is very innovative, and I think it's kind of cool. Absolutely.
The other thing, excuse me, the panels will not be carved. They'll all be baked enamel aluminum with vinyl, so that it can be changed. And the big thing is that depending on what you come up with a game plan for raising money or doing it, you know, they can be changed, and it's not something that's outrageous, it's not outrageous price. And I gave you a price range depending on the size and location, depending on what you want to do.
I think, I mean, speaking for myself, I think the opportunity to have these pay for themselves through kind of private-public partnerships is really attractive. So I applaud you for looking into that. I know that was something that came up during the retreat meeting, but I'm excited at this, it looks nice.
Yeah. My opinion is it's something that just helps sells the town. If you walk it, if you drive anywhere in the state, you see the state-provided white entering Rutland signs that are there. But not everyone has their own welcome sign. And it's something that really makes it, you're going into someplace new, it makes it stick out. Why is there a tree on the sign?
Right. And if it costs the taxpayers nothing.
Exactly.
It's a no-brainer.
The, another quick thing, just on the colors here, this gold is just placeholder there, the gold is going to be how many carat?
It's pure gold. All our gold leaf, whether it's white gold or gold gold, like St. Patrick's Church's gold leaf, Susie's Realty is white gold, but everything that you see carved in this whole area, it's, it's us. And, but the gold leaf, people will think it's outrageous in price, but the real benefit, if it's done correctly, is the longevity of gold leaf. You don't have acid rain issues or weather issues, and you don't have the southern, that's the other thing, southern exposure, you know? And so that's, it's excellent. If it's done correctly, it wears excellent. It's nice.
I spoke with a couple towns regarding what their, if they had signs, what they were made out of. And the one thing that I got was find something that's going to last before you learn it too late. There was a ton of towns that actually have to send members of the highway department out with car wax bottles, and they actually have to wax the sign once a year because it starts to fade and things like that. So the materials, without even telling you, that you provided, were all the materials that they suggested to avoid.
Yeah. No, I mean, that's what we, that's what I, you know, and of course, I'm small, I'm not like what I used to be, but I mean, that's, we've, I still do hand lettering and still do hand carving, and it's a, it's a, it's what we, that's a big thing for us.
Last thing I'll say is, I know this is just the Rutland's colors, but as a UMass almas seeing maroon and gold.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. We did that on purpose, no.
Just for you.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you for all your work on it.
Thank you. I don't know, it's Rutland, I mean, the people, some people here, and I grew up, my kids grew up here, so it's, it's a big deal. Thank you.
Thank you.
This does fall underneath the requirement for going up for quotes or bids or anything like that.
Yep.
By the way, because each sign is under $10,000.
Oh, okay.
Great.
Thank you.
So do we, was that up for a motion to move forward, or are you already moving forward with a proposal that you're going to get back to the board?
Correct.
Gotcha.
More of an update.
Excellent.
And it sounds like the electronic signs are?
Going to be part of that update as well.
Yes. Perfect.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Stillings through the chair, wait.
Go ahead.
What does the rest of the agenda look like? I'm going to have to cut out here briefly.
We have one, one more item, that's it.
Thank you.
Declaration of surplus property.
We were contacted by the Inspector General's office to say that this wasn't something that they came out to get us with. We checked to make sure, and then they called us back. Because of the way we're doing the hay leases this year, we have to declare the hay on town-owned fields as surplus property, so that Director Buckley can go and auction them off. Technically, this is the procedure that should have been done every time a hay bid went out, so we're just correcting that moving forward. So since we were contacted, we put forward this motion that's at the memo in front of you.
So I know AgCom left. I was going to ask, I know they had been working on updating the hay lease agreements, like a year ago.
Yeah.
So is this in?
In conjunction with that.
In conjunction with that, okay. I just wanted to make sure that that was still, I thought that they were still working on it, but I wasn't, I wanted to make sure.
KP Law, and that was about the end of it that we saw.
Right.
Okay. I know I reached out to KP separate and talked to Joe about the procedure going forward. That's how we thought to even contact the IG's office, because I guess they're the ones who have the information on that. And I guess what took the confusion, and I think this is somewhat silly on my end, just to put that out there, is that it's a lease for the stuff on the field, not a lease for the field itself. And so that's where it's a unique thing to small farming towns.
Oh, okay. And I think the proposals Ag was working on was leases for the fields themselves to be hayed, is that?
Basically that.
Right, where this is for the hay that will be cut.
This is the product of the field, not the field itself.
That's already been cut, right. I got you. Thank you for that clarification.
So there's a draft motion at the bottom of the memo from my office that we're looking to be made.
I move to declare the hay grown on the fields to be auctioned on July 18th, 2019, be declared as surplus property that is of no value to the normal functions of the government of the town, and to authorize the town administrator and director of public works to auction the hay growing on said town-owned fields off accordingly to the requirements of Massachusetts general law.
Are we, does this address the bubble links at all? Or are we just sweeping that under the rug?
The bubble links are, should already be gone by July 4th-ish, July 4th through 10th.
Yeah, this.
Fourth of July.
Yep.
Yeah, this.
We're past bubble link season.
That's what we went by there.
All right, as long as we have the goodwill of the bubble links, we're.
We'll have to ask them.
I'll second, I'll second the motion.
Any discussion?
The, while it says the fields to be auctioned off, Director Buckley is working on making that finalized list, and this was language provided us with that intent by the Inspector General's office.
Any, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we have no correspondence, so we have nothing else before the board?
There's just one quick thing that I forgot to mention in my update. Due to a number of vacancies in board and commission secretarial positions, my office is looking at creating a recording secretary position for someone to come in and just cover night meetings for those open commissions there. So if you see a new position posted, that's why we're trying to see if by adding hours, and it wouldn't be a benefited position, because there's no way there'd be a 20-hour-a-week position, but maybe if it's more than just one night every other week, it'll be more advantageous for someone to jump out there. So if you see that coming up soon, posted, that's why.
Great.
Thank you.
Meant to include that in my update and forgot, so thank you.
All right, thanks.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.